Ladies and gentlemen, it is now 6:03 July the 2nd, 2013. We're here at City Hall on 116 West Bridge Street in Granbury, Texas. I'd like to call upon Pastor Allen Adams with the Generations Church to lead us in our invitation, followed by the pledge allegiance and also the pledges of the Texas flag. Please rise.
Thank you so much for the honor of doing this. I can't pray any better than anyone else, but thank you. Father, we come to you in the name of Jesus with friends and neighbors, those who serve us in the public arena during present perils and future challenges. We ask for wisdom for every decision we make. And, Lord, we ask that especially for our council and for our citizens. And, Lord, we ask for courage to make painful decisions in light of the future, what would be best. Lord, make us stewards that reflect your purposes. And, Lord, in light of the recent deaths we've had in our community, Lord, for everything surrounding what has happened to Sergeant Lance and the funeral today, Lord, we just stand in silence praying that you would bring comfort to all the parties that are close to Lance in this situation. And in the name of Jesus, Lord, use us to be instruments of your peace and your comfort to those who need it the most. In Jesus' name, we ask for your blessing upon this meeting. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. One quick note, Councilperson Mickey Parsons is absent. At this time, the City Council will provide an opportunity for the citizens to present concerns or address issues that are not matters of consideration listed on the posted meeting agenda during our open-mic session. A person wishing to address the City Council must first register with the City Secretary and provide the following information: their name, residence address, daytime telephone number, and subject matter to be presented. Only one person may approach the microphone at any one time, and only that person on the microphone, upon recognition by the presiding officer, shall be allowed to speak for no more than three minutes unless otherwise directed by the presiding officer. Speakers must address their comments to the presiding officer rather than the individual City Council people or members of the staff. The speakers may file a copy of their remarks or supporting information with the City Secretary, who will make the information available to the City Council and the City Manager if requested. The council will be allowed to receive input or information for the future agenda items, but will not be allowed to enter into any discussion. The council shall allow a maximum of 30 minutes for the open mic. We have one open-mic member, Mr. Tom Baker.
Thank you for the opportunity. This is Tom Baker, 1002 West Pearl. This is sort of paraphrasing a letter to the other that was in the Hood County News this past weekend from Kim Francis. You know, we're running out of water in the lake, but really there are a lot of other things in Granbury than just the lake. But, you know, we've got three new restaurants open around the square. We've got a couple of businesses that have opened up. Iron Horse opened up a few weeks ago, which has been closed for a couple of years. We've got a new tourism director that started yesterday. Not really a guy from too far away, so he's been local here for a while and he's going to be around for a while. Saturday on the square, we had three different music venues going on. Big band, 1776 Gospel. So if you couldn't find something on the square this past weekend to do, I'm not sure what you're looking for. But, you know, things really aren't as bad in Granbury as they are. We've just got to put a cork in that band to keep the water from going on to Lake Whitney and such. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to make a couple of quick announcements there before we get into the agenda items. The first item being, first of all, I want to thank our police department, all of our city and our county and all the police officers that performed in this event that went on Friday. You know, that's a challenge that people have to face head-on, and they have to make decisions to do the right thing. And I think our police department made the right decisions in a real readily format and probably saved a lot more lives. So I want to thank them for a job well done. Just another example of what we have here in the city of Granbury is our protection. And also, I want to comment on our City Hall. Here recently, we just did an event, or we did for the first time ever, a training exercise to train for such an event. This is one time we had a training event. And then, within a month or two months after we had this training event, we had this event happen. And I got to say that our city employees, the staff and everybody, they reacted well. They took cover. They did what they needed to do. And here again, there were probably lives that were saved right there also. So a job well done by both, and just makes one more reason why, you know, the city of Granbury is such a great place to live. So thank you very much for that. I'd also like to now introduce our new staff personnel with our director of our tourism, Mr. Mitchell George. Mitchell, would you stand up out there and let everybody see what you look like so when you see him around town? He's our new addition. He's got a big challenge ahead of him, and I think Mitchell is ready to take that challenge on. So with speaking with him, I think he's got all the tools it takes to continue to do what we're doing in the tourism field. So welcome aboard, Mitchell. Next, I'd like to let introduce Becky Malden. If she would come up to the mic, and this was no surprise to you, wasn't it, Becky, to let people know about the Stage Two water restrictions? You know, water is really getting to be, it's getting to be real important, and we've got some restrictions out there that we've really got to step up to and conserve our water, not only for this community but for the state of Texas. So Becky, if you would, kind of let us know where we're at on our Stage Two water restrictions.
Well, there's information down at the utilities desk regarding these restrictions. There are limited number of days and times that watering can take place. We are monitoring this. Even when we're doing edits on utility billing, we're able to see who's using a lot of water, and we're going to try to take a closer look at that. As you know, the new utility rate structures were implemented on the 15th of June, and hopefully those will be helpful also in our community making an effort to conserve water here. So if you have questions, come see us down at the utility billing desk. We'd be happy to help you.
Thank you, Becky.
Mayor, can I ask her something, please?
Go ahead.
Becky, is there any way we could work with the BRA to, am I too loud here?
No.
Okay. They say they can never hear me, so it's coming back on me. Is there any way we could get the BRA to work out a deal where the ones that lives on the lake also could be under the same restrictions? Because I know every time I pass by, and I live on the water, sprinklers are going. And that would save water also for our lake.
I haven't been asked that question. We could certainly approach the BRA. I know that folks that live on the water or canals previously used lake water to water their residential properties. A lot of those pumps are no longer in the water. They're not extended out far enough. But we can certainly speak with BRA and get back with you on that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Becky. With that, council, we'll move into the consent agenda. The consent agenda is approval of the minutes of the City Council meeting of June 18th, 2013. Councilmen, you've all had a chance to look at these minutes over. Are there any changes or any comments on the meeting minutes of June the 18th? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes of June 18th, 2013. Do I have a motion?
Show move.
I've got a motion by Councilman Allen. Do I have a second?
Second.
I've got a second by Councilman Couch. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Those minutes approved. Next, we'll move into the deliberation agenda. The first one being a public hearing regarding the request of ACI Shops and Storage, LTD, and Georgia Baker to replat 901 South Metals Drive, being Lot 1R Block A of the ACI addition as Lot 1R1 Block A of the ACI addition, and consider and approve the said plat. That, I'll call upon Scott Stopcheck to bring us up to data.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council, Mr. Manager. What we have is an application to take a property, you can see, that's bounded and green. That portion contained in the red area is already a platted area. You can see it developed as the ACI dry storage shops. That portion in green that's just to the south of that, that has an odd-looking shape, is the land that's being acquired by the property owner from ACI for future expansion. You can see that it's outside the city, but within the city's ETJ, so we do have regulatory effect when it comes to subdividing property in the area. The applicant's proposing to develop this in two phases. You can see the area bounded in blue containing the little yellow squares, the first phase, where the first building footprint's going to be located. The area in red, or highlighted in red, is the second phase of that. Doesn't quite know what the building footprint placement is going to be. He's just solely looking at the Phase 1 at this point in time. As a part of the replat process, of course, we need to get fire coverage protection for the buildings in the area, not just Phase 1, but Phase 2 as well. So as a part of this particular application, you can see a water line that's shown as a blue line on your map that extends down to the portion of the area being replatted for both of the phases, kind of bisecting between the two phases. It will contain both of the building footprint areas within the fire hydrant halo. Our fire inspector has looked at it. I could tell you the cost of the extension of the water line with the placement of the hydrant fell below $25,000. As such, that's something that staff can approve as API. So staff is going to go ahead and process the PI and execute the PI if approved here tonight, once we get the easements dedicated for this replat. This is a picture that actually shows the gray areas of fire lanes that will be approved hard surface. One thing that the developers wanting to hold off on the second phase of this is to not put the impropriety's covered for the second phase until such time he develops that. So if you notice in your agenda packet, you've received two letters from the applicant, and I will summarize those very quickly. First of which is that the fire lanes on Phase 2 will be installed and inspected prior to any development commencing within the Phase 2 boundary. The second letter that he's offering up, and looking at this from DRC's perspective, is when you look at the ACI complex, the main ingress egress point is from the east, outside the platted boundary, where they actually come in to this platted development from another platted portion from the east. It's Lot 301. The concern that DRC had is what happens if title transfer flips between these two lots? So the second letter is just in case one of these lots flips, and there is a sole owner of this, but before the title transfer takes place, that the egress point located within, on this forefronting manos from this platted lot, be changed from an egress to an ingress egress point prior to title transfer. That way, we can have safe ingress egress and an OX box placed on it. Those two letters were voluntarily offered up, which kind of delays expense from the developer, but if we tie it to the plat application, we can make it as of record and have it comply with the subdivision ordinance requirements if those two incidents take place. So there are no variances tied to this particular plat application, but P&amp;Z and city staff are recommending approval of the replat as submitted, tying the two letters as voluntarily offered by the applicant as a part of this application. I'll be happy to entertain any questions.
I've got a watch clock. Just a dead-end, dead-end line.
It is a dead-end line.
So is that a possibility? So the mayor goes through the country. Dead-end line. You can't go back.
Well, that's true, and Alba was aware of this, and we had continual conversation about how he needs to basically flow the fire hydrant in order to keep the dead-end line free from sediment and debris. But yes, to answer your question, the hope is to actually extend the line out at a later point in time to provide for a full loop. But Alba's aware of his responsibility to flush the line from time to time. And Kevin's aware of this as well regarding the pressure of the system for the dead-end line.
Any more comments from the council?
I've got one, Mayor. Who's paying the $25,000?
Who's paying this $25,000?
Yes, sir.
Our subdivision ordinance, he'll have, let me take a step back. He'll have to basically hire a contractor, go in there out of his pocket, and construct it. The way our subdivision ordinance is fashioned is if the construction cost is less than $25,000, he executes a two-party contract that staff can approve, but he doesn't have to ante up surety. So we don't have the surety in place, but he won't get his billing permit until such time, so we have that over his head.
Exactly. And they're paying for it.
And they're paying for it, correct.
Yeah.
So he'll have to, Wade Clark with ACI will have to go out there, hire a contractor, pay the contractor, and we'll just go out there and inspect it and accept it once it's installed.
With that, I'll open up the public hearing. Is anybody in the public who wants to speak on this topic? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Council, any more comments? If not, I'll consider and recommend approval of the said replat with acknowledging of the two letters that presented. Do I have a motion?
Show move.
I've got a motion by Mr. Councilman Allen. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I have a second by Councilman Perkel. Any more discussion, council? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That replat is approved. The next one is a public hearing regarding the request of Winkelman and Associates on behalf of 3925 Partners LTD to preliminary plat a 22.070 acre tract of the WR Query Survey, abstract number 385, as lots 1 through 5, Block 1 of the Kroger Marketplace addition, and consider and approve the said preliminary plat. The subject property is located at 3600 and 3628 FM4 and 3925 East Highway 377. Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've seen this piece of property on the last council agenda. We recently approved two S.U.P.s to allow for the fuel dispensing station and daily outdoor display on the property. We told you we were coming forward very soon with the preliminary plat application, showing how the property will be parceled out conceptually. Let me show you the elevations of the store that we got. These are kind of new renderings of what the store will look like. It's about 123,000 square feet. You can see it's very peacefully done. The elevation, actually, top elevation, north elevation will face as proposed, the 377 frontage. Here's the layout of the preliminary plat and the water line. You can see the solid line to your left, which traverses 377 along the frontage, is existing. The dashed line are the proposed improvements interior to the property to serve the property and loop the water line. Our subdivision ordinance requires a point of connectivity to the further extent of the platted boundary. You can see along Highway 4 to the lower right, the engineer has provided for that connectivity point for continuation once the final plat has been made and the improvements are installed. This is the sewer line. Again, you can see the solid line is the existing line. The existing sanitary sewer doesn't follow 377's wide-oa as we typically see. It actually goes to the back water line, and you can see it bisects this property. So we're going to have a variance on this particular application. All of the out parcels, and there's three out parcels to the 377 frontage and the main lots toward the back, are being served through new sewer lines being installed. Take note, if you will, the existing sewer line that traverses along 4 to the bottom of the screen and then juts to the north. The reason for that is the topography falls off and there's a low point to the north. Had they extended it along Highway 4 to closer to the top of the hill, the only way to get to it would be to pressurize or pump it. So our city engineer is recommending approval of tying the, providing for continuation to the adjoining property to the low point of the property. That way, it can gravity flow, and we won't have any kind of lifting or pumping needed along Highway 4. This is a site plan that we previously saw, showing the daily outdoor display and the location to the upper left of the fuel dispensing station on Lot 3. You can see also the two empty out parcels, Lot 2 and Lot 4 respectively. There's a location of our fire lane easements to serve the property, our utility easements, And we do have some variances associated with this particular piece of property. We'll go through them real quick. We have a variance to 31E and 410 to not improve Highway 377 or FM4. We've also, I don't know if everybody's seen, but we do have new schematics, renderings from Tech Dot on the 377 expansion, showing the six-lane facility with sidewalks along 377 as a part of the template. So our city staff and our engineer are recommending approval of 31E and 410 to not improve 377 or Highway 4 respectfully, 39 and 45 to not extend a sewer main. That solely applies to the forefrontage road, as we mentioned earlier. The reason for that is to actually gravity flow to the adjoining property to the low point. And then lastly, we have a variance to 36A to not install commercial sidewalks along the roadways. We have a recommendation of a partial approval on that. We're recommending approval on 377 as its part of the Tech Dot roadway template for the expansion, but not approval on Highway 4 as we want connectivity along the southernmost point to the joiner along Highway 4. The other little nuance that you may have noticed on the preliminary plat, if I can get to it, you'll see Lot 1, here, there we go, it's a better picture of it. You can see a detention basin to the upper portion of your screen, about midway through the developed property. Fairly large-sized detention basin. Our subdivision ordinance and our public improvement policy basically facilitates that, if at all possible, we don't like to see a series of detention ponds or detention ponds if we have an adequate system to discharge to. In this particular case, Highway 4 has an undersized culvert or a choke point where we can't get all the water to actually flow under Highway 4. So you have, as a part of your correspondence and your staff packet, a recommendation from your engineer supporting a detention pond as an alternative means to address this stormwater flow issue due to the choke point at Highway 4. So to wrap this up, both city staff and P&amp;Z and our city engineer are recommending approval of the variances with partial approval of the sidewalk variances. But as our ordinance requires, we need a statement read in the approval that we're accepting the alternative drainage system, i.e. the detention pond, as a means of addressing the stormwater issue due to the choke point on Highway 4. I'll be happy to entertain any questions, and I also want to say that we have our Winkelman's engineers here on behalf of Kroger, as well as Freezing Nichols as well.
At this time, let's open it up to the public hearing. Is anybody in the public going to talk on this copy? Council, do you have any questions?
I've got one.
Councilman Allen?
Thank you, sir. On the variance on the second one, you've got on here Highway 144 South Morgan Street.
FM40, oh.
It should say Highway 4.
Yes, FM4. Which variance you looking at, Councilman Allen?
Beg your pardon?
Which variance?
The second one.
3.9?
Yes, sir, uh-huh, and 4.5.
Highway 377 or FM4. You said 144.
It says on mine, it says Highway 144 South Morgan Street.
That must be, I'm not seeing that, but it must be a clerical error. What we're asking for is a variance to sewer, which is the second variance on Highway 4.
Okay, all right. The other question is, when we go into some other items on the agenda, I noticed that some people are putting up money for sidewalks or streetlights or whatever. Is that some people we require to do that and some we don't?
On sidewalks, we don't consider sidewalks a public improvement that's dedicated. It is within the public wide-oa, but it is part of their plat work. As a part of the subdivision ordinance, it's also required in order to develop it. So what we do is, to answer your question, it's not tied into the PIA, not part of the surety process, but it is part of the building inspection process and the plat work.
So they will have sidewalks?
They will. What we're requesting here in this instance is that portion, because Tech Dot has submitted plans and schematics to have sidewalks on 377, our staff and our engineers are recommending not having them install sidewalks along 377 because Tech Dot's already going to do it. But on Highway 4, since Tech Dot's not doing it, we're recommending that they do install sidewalks.
Okay, and it may be, it was probably in the next three or four, I was reading in there, where they were going to put up escrow money for something.
Okay.
Sidewalks. I'm just curious.
They will have to put up escrow money for the sewer and the water lines and all the public improvements contained within public dedicated easements.
And they feel like this pond's going to be big enough?
Well, we'll get to that. Actually, what's going to drive the cost of the bond or the surety is detailed engineering plans. So once they get their detailed engineering plans for all the public improvements, then the surety and the PIA will have to tie into the approved engineer's estimate. And then our engineers will review those numbers to make sure the pond is reflective of the actual cost to do those public improvements.
It is. It's a nice-sized pond. I mean, it looks good, but I don't know.
It is. And just to let you know, the way, conceptually, the way this is being presented is this will be a privately maintained pond. So Kroger will be obligated to, out of their own pocket, maintain it rather than have the city use our forces. Of course, we'll have our standard language in there saying if we ever have to remedy any kind of drainage issues, that we have the ability to file a lien to recover costs. But that's typically what we see, is if it's not a regional public pond and it's more of a private pond, then we put the obligation for maintenance on the property owner.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Council, any more questions? With that, I'll close the public hearing. Council, any more discussion on this issue? If not, I'll entertain a motion to consider and approve the said preliminary plat with the said variances.
Show move.
I've got a motion by Councilman Couch. I've been informed by the attorney that the second one is a partial variances, so we'll have to go with what's recommended by the staff.
And we do need to accept the alternative drainage design as conceptually presented. And it will be good.
So in our motion, so in our motion, council, we'll consider and approve the preliminary plat with the said variances, exception of the third one being a partial, and to include the alternative drainage.
As recommended by the city engineer.
Is that maybe, are you okay with that, Councilman?
Yes. I second the motion.
We have a second by Councilman Allen. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That plat is approved. Moving on to the next one, a public hearing regarding the request of Tom Baker for a specific use permit for 205 West Moore Street to allow a one-guest suite, unhosted bed and breakfast, and consider and approve the ordinance provided for said S.U.P. Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This particular piece of property was actually operated in conjunction with the Heritage House. It's located just to the east by the previous owner. It's being presented now as a separate cottage for an unhosted facility for one guest suite, as stated in your application. There's not adequate room on-site for parking, but as with the previous S.U.P. issued for the cottage, parking is actually shown to be off-site. Now, we do have a letter, and it's incorporated in your agenda packet and staff report as well, that that property owner has offered up those parking spaces, which would make it compliant. So if in the event the S.U.P. is offered, we can tie that covenant, saying that those property spaces are, or parking spaces are tied to the operation of the S.U.P. If those spaces ever go away, it voids out the S.U.P. automatically. P&amp;Z is coming to you with a recommendation of, go back to my conditions, that the S.U. P&amp;Z is coming to you with a recommendation of, go back to my conditions, that the SUP is recommended for approval and then it be granted for a term of three years and that the operation of the B&amp;B shall be held to the same standards as contained within the supplemental requirements of the zoning ordinance, which also includes those parking requirements. So again, if those, if those parking spaces aren't available, they would violate condition number two and in that sense, it would be revocable. I'll be happy to entertain any questions, should you have any.
Counsel? With that, I'll open it up for a public hearing. Is anybody in the public wanting to speak on this matter? So we have Mr. Tom Baker, put your name and your address.
Tom Baker, 1002 West Pearl. We have asked for a temporary use of the former American Heritage parking spaces. This property actually is under contract right now. Once the SUP is accepted or is granted, then the new owner will put on onsite parking using some space that's already been used in the past, but he will improve it to the recommended hard surface, which is not hard surface at the point. It's been a B&amp;B for basically 12 years. Last few years, it's not operated with an SUP, but that was a misunderstanding by former owners and we're trying to bring it up to where it's supposed to be and we won't maintain it as it's supposed to be.
I have one question. When you said the parking spots will be, if the sale of the Heritage House comes through, then the owner will supplement those parking spaces or build new parking?
Right now, there, I think there is a contract under for the old American Heritage, but the spaces that Scott pointed out and the ones that we will be using for the McCon Cottage, as we call it, are not on that property. They're actually on property that Ron Bleeker still owns. It's a little bit of an unusual situation, but the front part of the house and such is part of this potential sale. The back part of the property where there's a little stream and a gazebo and a garage is under a different ownership, if you want to say that. And that's where the guests potentially can park for the time being, like I said, until we have the spaces on the 205 property.
So Scott, if we was to approve this with the parking requirements, then it would stay with that property until?
Yeah, the second condition is kind of a catch-all where we say the operation held to the standards set forth in Article 4. It basically stipulates those parking requirements and whether those parking requirements are through an offsite agreement with an adjoining property owner or onsite, if he comes in after the fact and puts hard surface down and says that temporary agreement's no longer valid, we have parking spaces, we'll go out there and inspect, then it's that flexible. We can actually use one or the other. It's just we need to know through some instrument or a physical inspection that those property space or parking spaces are available. And we've seen offsite easements before. It's not atypical. So we can actually use this letter from the Bleakers saying temporarily until they get the spacing down. There's nothing that needs to change within the conditions of the SUP. We can just work with number two and work with the property owner to make sure that they're compliant.
Counsel, any more questions for Mr. Baker? Thank you, Mr. Baker.
Well, there's actually is one request. I would, I am requesting a five-year SUP as opposed to the three that was approved by P&amp;Z. Since it's been operating for 12 years by actually the current owner and such, we're just managing the property for the Bleakers, so we're asking for five instead of three if that's amendable to you folks.
Scott, can you kind of update us on where we stand on such a request as a five-year versus the one to three that they normally?
Sure. I can tell you typically and historically, it's been a pattern when we see a new B&amp;B open for the first time on new property, what we see is a one-year term. When it's re-upped, we generally see a three or a five-year term and then from there on out, we typically see a five-year term. We actually researched, or I've researched, the nearest unhosted one or two guest suite piece of property that is within the same zoning district. It's actually on Thorpe Springs Road and still within the same R-12 zoning district. It was issued in about 2009, 2010, and it was for one year, but it was a new operation and it is now defunct. It didn't renew its SUP. So typically, that's what you do, but you have the discretion to do whatever you see fit if you want to, for reasons you believe, feel comfortable with the operation of this particular facility, go from three to five, you can do so.
Can I address something? The owner of this property has had management issues of the bed and breakfast and currently owes us a good sum of money. And so he has not demonstrated good management procedures. And so I would certainly not recommend that.
That's not me.
That is not Tom Baker.
No, no, but is that Wayne, is that where Tom's going to park at?
Yes.
Is that what you're saying?
I had rather do it at three years, Tom, to start with until you get this parking situated if they sell the property, you know. I'd hate to do it five years and then we got, do you park here? Do you park there? Do you have a contract, not a contract, you know, with that? I would have to take Wayne's lead on that.
Tom?
Mr. Couch?
What kind of agreement do you have with the owner then as far as your management? Is that?
Basically, ours is a handshake agreement, but the Bleakers really are out of the bed and breakfast business if you want to look at that. The property is under contract to a non-hostility person. He's looking at this as being investment property, but us to continue operating as basically we have for about the last 19 or 20 months. We advertise it off our site, we maintain it, they take care of taxes, I mean, they take care of property taxes and insurance. We take care of the H.O.T. and sales tax and that type of thing. So it's, basically, we're acting as agents slash managers, but we're not the-
If it was your property, I'd have no issue with it. Or is it possible that as long as Tom is the managing agent, that we could give him the five years?
Typically, we don't see zoning conditions tied to individuals, named individuals, then you get into a fairness issue.
But it's been a good situation for the current owners and a good situation for the future owners, having us maintain it as we do because we're pretty successful and we keep it filled and that's what they're concerned about. We paid our taxes and come down.
Wayne, what other issues with the owner?
The owner did not pay his bed and hotel occupancy tax for several years. He paid the state, but he had to, stayed out of real trouble and somebody didn't pay us. Right now, he owes about $14,000.
Counsel, any more questions for Mr. Baker? Thank you, Mr. Baker. Well, now I've closed the public hearing. Counsel, you got any more question or concerns turning this item? With that, we'll entertain a motion to consider and approve the ordinance approved providing for the SUP and also enter with the parking lot requirements. Do I have a motion? For the, well, that's going to come with a motion. You get a motion for three or five years out there, Counsel. By the request. I'll make a motion that we approve the said ordinance provided for the SUP, the current one, with the parking lot requirements. I have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Mr. Purple. Any more discussion, Counsel? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That SUP is approved. Our next item is a public hearing regarding the request of Moss McIver, hope I'm pronouncing that right, to final plat, 906 East Highway 377 being a 305 acre tract of the Marcus Smith survey. Abstract number 305 is lot one, block one of the Jiffy addition and consider and approve the said final plat. Scott, you want to lighten some of that one?
Mr. Mayor, this is a application that takes property. This is the old Jiffy Loop Texaco located across from Walmart. It's currently in survey. Takes it out of survey and creates a legal lot of record in order to entertain any building permit activity as part of our subdivision ordinance. But we can't do any permit activity unless it's a legitimately platted lot under our subdivision ordinance and talking with the owner. He doesn't plan any expansion, but he just realizes that having a legitimate lot of record that can be expandable and is recorded just ups the value of the property. So he's doing so. The plat application comes to you with variances. We have a variance to 31E and 410 to not improve 377 to an urban standard facility. Again, we're going through the review of the Tech Dot schematic that shows the six lane with the sidewalks. We have an approval of section eight, 48, to not install streetlights, 36A4 to not install commercial sidewalks along 377. The applicant's voluntarily placed a note on there at such time City of Tech Dot approves a capital improvement program. The adjoining owner will construct the sidewalks. If it's part of the Tech Dot program, then he won't have to actually lay a sidewalk next to the sidewalk. It'll be part of the Tech Dot template. So P&amp;Z, city staff and your city engineer recommend approval of the plat application as presented along with the variances as stipulated in your staff report.
Thank you, Scott. Counsel, any discussion on this one?
The only time we would actually revisit parking is if he did expand the building footprint. He's captured with the parking spaces to support the use. That's a fairly old building, so whatever he was vested in at the time with the parking available at the time, he can continue to use and enjoy without any kind of city intrusion. But if he does expand, then we'll actually revisit the parking table.
With that, this is a public hearing. I'll open it up to the public. Does anybody in the public want to speak on this item? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, any more discussion? With that, I'll entertain a motion to consider and approve the final plat with the variances of section 3.1 and 4.1 and also the approval of the variance of section 4.8 not to install streetlights and approval of the variance of section 3.6A4 to not install a commercial sidewalk along 377 running at this time. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Couch. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Allen. Counsel, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That plat is approved. Our next item is a public hearing regarding a request of Jerry Durant to replat lot two, block three of the Commerce Center addition, Phase 1B as lots 2R1, 2R2, and 2R3, block three of the Commerce Center addition, Phase 1B, and consider and approve the said plat. The property is located on the Ruth Smith Drive. Scott?
Mr. Mayor, Counsel, this is a piece of property that's a single recorded lot within the Commerce Center. What the applicant's proposing to do is take that six acre lot and create three lots out of that, one approximately four acres and the other two, you can see 2R2 and 2R3, each one acre. From what I understand, he has a interested buyer in one of the one acre lots, didn't need a full six acres, so that's why you see the parceling. I can tell you the facility or the lots have water and sewer that already meet our design standards as it's a recent development. There are no variances associated with this application. It becomes more ministerial in its effect. As such, P&amp;Z and city staff and your city engineer recommend an approval as presented.
Thank you, Scott. With that, I'll open it up for the public hearing. Does anybody in the public want to speak on this matter? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, do you have any discussion? With that, I entertain a motion to consider and approve the said plat.
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Allen and a second by Mr. Purple. Any more discussion, Counsel? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That approval has, that plat has been approved also. Our next item is a public hearing regarding the request of United Co-op Services to preliminary plat 320 Fall Creek Highway being a 10.010 acre tract of the Benjamin Green survey. Abstract number 196 as lot one, block one of the UCS addition and consider and approve the said preliminary plat. Scott, check.
Mr. Mayor, Counsel, this is approximately 10 acres, as you said, running Fall Creek Highway. It's a location of United Co-op Services. They do have the public franchise service area operating out of this facility. What's being presented is a proposal to take the property out of survey again in order to conduct some permitting activity. They want to expand the building as it currently sits. In order to do so, they need to plant it and create a legitimate lot of record. As a part of this application, we do have variances associated with that. We have a variance to 39 and 45 to not extend an eight inch sewer main along Highway 167. The current location of the sewer is just to the east of, I believe, the Toyota dealership is where it falls short. So again, the cost to extend sewer from its present location in order to have one service unit tie onto this is a little over burdensome. The applicant has put our standard note on there saying at such times sewer is available, he'll extend it to and through the location and bear the cost. We have a variance to 48 to not install streetlights. We have a variance request to 31 and 410 to not improve Highway 67, 167. And we have a variance request to 36A4 to not install commercial sidewalks along 167. The applicant again has placed our standard sidewalk notes stating at such time sidewalks are adjoining his property, he'll extend it to and through in order to provide connectivity. P&amp;Z and your city staff recommend approval of the plat as presented. Oh, one more thing. There is a water line, it has water service in this area. So you can see there's a six inch on one side, a 12 inch on the, a 10 inch on the far east side. They're actually tying into both of them, providing for a water line loop and hydrant placement within the interior of the property. You can see the configuration of the new lines in the dashed area. The plat also provides for dedicated public easements for those expanded water lines into the interior of the property. With that, staff recommends and P&amp;Z recommends approval of the variances as presented, given that the applicant has placed voluntary notes, voluntarily placed the notes on the plat and approval of the plat as presented.
With that, I'll open up the public hearing. Anybody in the public wanting to talk on this matter? We'll close the public hearing. Counsel, do you have any discussion on this matter?
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have to go ahead and approve the variances also. We'll make a motion approving the preliminary plat with the said variances.
I'll make a motion to approve the, as presented with the variances.
I have a motion by Councilman Couch. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Allen. Any more discussion, Counsel? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That plat is approved. Our next item is a public hearing regarding a request of John McCacken to replat lot four, block one of the McCon Reserve addition, Phase 2, as lot 4R-1 and 4R-2. Block one of the McCon Reserve addition, Phase 2, and consider and approve the said plat. This property is located on Waters Edge Drive, south of Hill Boulevard. Scott, I'll check.
Mr. Mayor, Counsel, this is again a recorded lot of record. What the property owner's proposing to do is take the one recorded lot and propose two lots out of it. You can see from the aerial that the probably northern two-thirds of it is developed and the southern one-third of it is vacant. They're proposing to draw a property line in order to carve off that one vacant area and create a separate legitimate lot for it for development in the future. We looked at the building setbacks to ensure that there was adequate room for front, side, and rear setbacks in order to place the building there. There assuredly is. And also accommodate parking on the lot as well for any- And also accommodate parking on the lot as well for any kind of office or retail. There, I can tell you there's no variances associated with this. We have water and sewer running Waters Edge. As such, the plat becomes more ministerial in its procedural. P and Z and city staff recommend approval as presented.
With that, I'll open up the public hearing. Anybody in the public wanna talk on this matter? With that, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, is there any discussion on this matter? With that, I'll entertain a motion to consider and approve the said plat at Waters Edge Drive, south of Hill Boulevard. Do I have a motion?
I shall move.
I have a motion by Councilman Perkel.
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Couch. Any more discussion, counsel? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That said plat is approved. The next item, I'm gonna read them off, is, there's three fold here. We've got eight, nine, and ten. I'm gonna go ahead and read all of them off and then Scott will have the opportunity to discuss each one of them and then... The first one is a public hearing regarding a request of Jerry Durant to rezone lot two, block one of the Toyota addition from interim holding to heavy commercial and consider and approve an ordinance providing for the said rezoning. This property is located at the intersection of Sardius Boulevard and East Highway three seventy-seven. The next item, number nine, is a public hearing regarding a request of Jerry Durant for the Pacific use to allow operation of a used automotive sale and major automotive repair business in the heavy commercial district on lot two, block one of the Toyota addition and consider and approve an ordinance providing for the said S U P. This property once again is located at the intersection of Sardius Boulevard and East Highway three seventy-seven. The next item, number ten, is a public hearing regarding a request of Jerry Durant to replat lot two, block one of the Toyota addition as lot two R, block one of Toyota addition, and consider and approve the said replat. The property, you know, once again is located at the intersection of Sardius Boulevard and East Highway three seventy-seven. Mr. Stop, check.
Mr. Mayor, counsel, this is a kind of a trifecta application, three different applications rolled into one development. You can see we're starting with the subject property bounded in yellow. It's currently a zone interim holding, which basically is a placeholder and ag designation. The adjoining property, as you can see, just to the west, is heavy commercial. What's being proposed here is a used car dealer along the front of the property with a body shop along the back of the property behind the used car sales office. We received a site plan that actually shows the building placement and the water line loops running through the building to serve the area. There's the site plan. So you can see the general building placements. You can see the larger of the two buildings, running three seventy-seven is actually the sales office. Per the site plan, the used car sales stock will be located in the front between the office and the three seventy-seven frontage. The cars pending for the body shop are proposed to be located behind the sales office off of the street frontage, but in front of the make ready building or the body shop located toward the back of the building. Per the zoning ordinance, what requires for both uses is a base heavy commercial zone district, which doesn't allow either uses by right. You have to have an S U P for both used car sales and the body shop. Body shop is defined or classified within major automotive repair. So that's why you see the two S U Ps. We're establishing the base zoning district of heavy commercial. We're following that with two S U Ps. One for the used auto sales per site plan located along the street frontage in front of the sales office and the body shop located on the back of the building. I can tell you the site plan will be actually depicted and tied to the adoption ordinance as well to secure the placement of what's going on as the property is being developed. The replat itself, I can tell you previously that this is a recorded lot of record, but the replat does a couple of things. First, it actually dedicates utility easements for a water line. You can see circled in red, there's an extension that's hatched for a, that's about a sixty or seventy millennial foot water line that terminates with a fire hydrant and that's to actually get the building coverage for the body shop within that protective halo. We also have a dedication of a twenty-four foot fire lane easement and we also have a private detention pond contained within a dedicated easement. If you look to the upper left-hand portion of the planted lot, you'll see the detention pond with the pipe going to the adjoining property. And that was actually an easement dedicated on a previous admitting plat as well. So that's the purpose of the replat, is to get all the fire lanes and the easements and the public improvement easements for the detention pond, or private detention pond duly dedicated. Again, as with the previous water line, this little extension is below the twenty-five thousand dollar target mark. So this is a P I that staff can approve, no surety. However, as discussed previously, the property owner will have to find a contractor and pay for the installation of the water line out of his own pocket. And before any development commences, we'll go out there and inspect the water line and make sure we have the warranty bond for the work prior to issuing the permit. Given all that regarding these three locations, P and Z and city staff are recommending approval of the zoning to the base heavy commercial district, approval of the S U Ps for the used car sales as depicted on the site plan and major auto repair as placed and depicted on the site plan and approval of the replat as presented. There are no variances associated with the replat, it's just again easement dedications.
Thank you, Scott. I'll now open up the public hearing on all three of these items. Anybody in the public wanna speak on these matters? With not, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, do you have any concerns or questions on all three of these items?
I think everything is fine. I'm happy with everything. Thank you all for your time. I think we're all good.
Thank you, Councilman Perkel. Counsel, any more discussion?
Make a motion, we do it, Mayor.
With that, I'll, we'll have, make a motion on all three of them individually. Number eight, we'll entertain a motion to approve the ordinance providing for the said rezoning from interim holding to heavy commercial. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Allen.
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Perkel. Counsel, any more discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Number eight, the approval of the said rezoning passes. The next one being the, I'll entertain a motion to consider and approve the ordinance providing for the said S U P. Or, well, that's on the... I'm sorry, I'm sorry. We have two S U Ps on this, one for the body shop and one for the used car sales. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the said S U Ps for that.
So moved.
We have a, we have a motion by Councilman Couch and we have a second by Councilman Perkel. Counsel, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That S U P does approve. The next one being number ten, I'll entertain a motion to consider and approve the said replat of the property which is located at the intersection of Sardius Boulevard and East Highway three seventy-seven.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Allen and I have a second by Councilman Couch. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That replat does approve. Our next item is a discussion status, the discussion status of the Opera House redevelopment project and consider, consider and approve any recommendations from the Opera House redevelopment committee. With that, I'm gonna call upon, start with, I'm gonna call upon Wayne McKeffin. He's probably gonna introduce Scott Tucker. Bill Scott, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's really, we're just using this as an update. We've had no meetings of the Opera House committee. It looks like the construction is proceeding very well, so I'll let the fellow Scott talk about that.
Gentlemen, construction is proceeding rather well. We're officially finished the concrete operations this week. Steel starts Monday. We've done a lot of interior retro fitting and construction. Sort of, we still have to, in nude mode, in the building. We're doing well with concrete, by us, and all of it. I think we'll find on our end, probably have to leave again sometime soon.
Bill, are you gonna be doing a lot of work over there during our Fourth of July event?
Sure we're not. We're closing down the Vic. More and more, shutting down, instead of setting up some flags and cleaned up and dusted up and we're gonna try to spend some time.
Okay.
Where are the rocks at now?
Back to the city yard.
Back to the city yard? And I will say, when I drove back there, I never seen a structure like that. When you go up and you can see the fair lumberjack, two foot, four foot, six feet, eight, nine, ten, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty, forty-one, forty-two, forty-three, forty-four, forty-five, forty-six, forty-seven, forty-eight, forty-nine, fifty, fifty-one, fifty-two, fifty-three, fifty-four, fifty-five, fifty-six, fifty-seven, fifty-eight, fifty-nine, sixty, sixty-one, sixty-two, sixty-three, sixty-four, sixty-five, sixty-six, sixty-seven, sixty-eight, sixty-nine, seventy, seventy-one, seventy-two, seventy-three, seventy-four, seventy-five, seventy-six, seventy-seven, seventy-eight, seventy-nine, eighty, eighty-one, eighty-two, eighty-three, eighty-four, eighty-five, eighty-six, eighty-seven, eighty-eight, eighty-nine, ninety, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, one thousand.
Yeah, I have that in my truck. They gave it to me and I have it in my truck and we'll certainly get that.
Does it work?
Well, yeah, it's like you put on a fire, so.
Oh, really?
It's really old.
Oh.
Well, thank you, Bill, for the update and have a good Fourth of July weekend. No action taken on that item. Our next item will be discuss and consider an interlock agreement with Hood County to allow the county to install communication equipment on the city-owned tower at the Granberry Cemetery. With that, I'll call upon Tony Toll to lighten some on that.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This was a poll that was sent from Sheriff Dees to Nancy McKellen requesting to be allowed to place fire ban, county fire ban, and a three meter cam radio weather spotter on the town center area. We acted out a four, three position, four open. So they request to reveal for draft of the most agreement to his office and the county attorney's office.
Thank you, Tony. Counsel, do you have any questions for Tony? If not, pardon?
How much we get paid for that?
Well, you notice that there's a thirty day notice to the other party, okay, that we can cancel it. So if we get people wanting to hang things and pay us on those things, then we'll approach them and either they pay us or they take their trip down. So that's sort of what that thirty day notice is. We hope that it doesn't necessarily come, because it is improving the, you know, all of the fire and...
I can't see us charging them. They've worked good with us on things, so I was just kinda activating Tony a minute.
It is just though a clause that if in fact it was something that we needed to take, it was getting a tremendous offer, that they'd still have the ability to touch it.
I would also point out that the agreement says that they have to tell us who their contractor is ahead of time and we get to approve that. We get to be there when they install it so that we can have some kind of control to make sure we know who's climbing on our tower, that they're doing it safely.
Counsel, any more questions for Tony? With that, I'll entertain a motion to, to consider the interlock agreement with Hood County to allow the county to install the communication equipment on the city-owned tower at the Granberry Cemetery. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Allen. Do we have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Couch. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That agreement does approve. With that, counsel, if there's any more discussion? If not, everybody have a nice Fourth of July and get out and spend a lot of money. This counsel is adjourned.